I think we'll go ahead and get started and let's do introductions. We'll start with those in the room and I'll get it started. Pat Mullin, Commissioner.
Joe Kirby, County Administrator.
Willia Neville, Public Information Officer.
Vance Cronin, County Counsel.
And phoning in or on the video.
Lori Starhod, Director of Natural Areas and Parks, Benton County.
Morning.
Annabelle Haddam Neal, Commissioner.
The other two commissioners.
Greg Riddler.
Go ahead, Greg.
Greg Riddler, Under Sheriff.
All right. Who is caller 01?
I don't, this is Annabelle, I don't know if I'm the one that chimed in first or not.
She's caller four.
You're number four, Annabelle.
Okay, always at the bottom of the list, dang it.
No, that there's.
Caller one is our policy count.
Okay.
I'm just kidding.
She's Annabelle's four.
Okay.
It could be, it could be me.
Nope, Brian, you're caller two. Brian's caller two.
Sounds like a game show.
It does. With no prizes.
All right, and I see Mary Ottley on the screen. Are you there, Mary?
I'm here.
Great. And you have a name instead of a number, you should feel special. All right, and caller, oh, Greg Riddler. Okay, I think that's, that's everybody. And Joe, if you want to start our meeting here.
Great, Commissioners, just to set the stage for you. This is the second policy meeting that we're having with the Board. We currently have these scheduled every Tuesday and Thursday. The purpose of these meetings is for the Emergency Operations Center Director, in this case, Brian Lee, to give us a brief update of what's happening in the Emergency Operations Center. But primarily, our conversations, other than the update, are geared towards policy direction that the Emergency Operations Center needs. This is your opportunity to provide input to the Emergency Operations Center and what is happening there, how decisions are being made. I will tell you that I just forwarded another email to you just shortly before this meeting. That email is from our Health Department, which was identifying what the Health Department priorities are for Emergency Operations Center. This is the same document that you saw.
This conference will now be recorded.
That's me. Thank you, Nick, much appreciated.
This is the same document that you saw on Tuesday, and I just forwarded it to you again today, so it was at the top of your email in case you wanted to reference it during the course of our conversation. I'm going to turn this over to Brian Lee. Brian and I have touched base this morning on the two, in particular, policy direction aspects that he's looking for. So Brian, if you'd like to jump in.
Yeah, so just a quick update on the EOC status. We did sign the MOU with the city, so I'm actually, I'm not going to call myself fully off today, but at least not in the EOC, getting a little bit of a break. But the general status right now, and our main priority is that PPE allocation. We received a sizable donation from OSU regarding personal protective equipment that we are going to put together a committee starting tomorrow to help figure out allocations. We are going to follow OHA guidelines, and any deviations from OHA guidelines, we want to be approved by the committee. So we want a very transparent, open process, so no one's upset later on. We can all say we sat in a room together and agreed. Some of the priorities, you know, that I really want to discuss today are focused on what the Health Department identified as one of their priorities, number three, which is accommodate vulnerable populations. And some other general updates before we dive into that is we are building up our volunteer donations management branch under operations. That's going to be mainly spearheaded by Mr. Cronin, who is our, actually, Emergency Management Assistant now, and James Maline from the city. So we started a website, BentonCounty Recovers.org, to help coordinate some of that, and we're going to be staffing a donation site, which is going to be at the library beginning on Monday, March 30. And I can get you the hours a little bit later, but we're basically asking for very specific items, new and raptor, so we can help facilitate that process of getting it out to community members and organizations that need it. The other thing, you know, when we talk about, go through some of these issues that I would like to have some conclusion to today, also cover some of the resource request nature. So I asked some questions to Mary Ottley and Debbie and Dawn Dale regarding whether or not we can purchase things. So right off the bat, a lot of our resource requests across the board is something we might run into, is whether or not we are allowed to use general fund dollars or county dollars in general to purchase things like Clorox wipes and toilet paper and things like that for individuals or individual organizations. And I don't know the answer, and I don't need one this second, but we, a lot of our requests are of that nature, as well as of the nature of, we need funding, blanket funding. So we'll get more into that here a little bit later on. But the first issue that has come up that we would like to have some sort of conclusion to before we start dumping more resources into it is what we plan to use the fairgrounds for. I actually just, like, literally two seconds ago, got an email from Gary Stockoff. Pfizer had some concerns about us moving the EOC to our other location, or to that location, and so that might throw a huge roadblock in our plans to expand our organization.
Actually, Brian, let me, let me address that if I could real quick. We are going to continue to work diligently to address that. This morning, I just sent an email in response to Gary Stockoff's email. My direction is if you need the Emergency Operations Center to be relocated, that we will accommodate that, and we will direct that use to 4500 Research Way. We will do what we can to reasonably address the tenants' concerns, but I do believe that we should utilize our space that currently belongs to us in that building as we need. And so Vance is also wanting to weigh in on this.
And I agree wholeheartedly with Joe that we have a tenant in a portion of a facility. Their responsibility and the scope of their concerns does not extend to the 40% of the structure that we would be utilizing. I think as long as the secure access to and from the Pfizer portion of that building is maintained, frankly, Pfizer doesn't have a say, I mean, to be quite blunt about it. So it is now our building. If it is a facility that is viable as the EOC Operations Center, I think we should continue to pursue it if that's the direction we wanted to go, regardless of Pfizer's objections.
So Brian, I think that's, I think that's an issue that we don't need to continue to talk about on this call. That's an operational issue that we are resolving.
Okay, perfect. Well, then that gets me to the fairgrounds use. So right now, we are planning, one of our possible uses of the fairgrounds as a whole is as an alternate care site. And what I mean when I say alternate care site, I mean specifically hospital or clinic overflow, whether that's COVID-19 positive patients or just patients that need additional care but could be seen slightly more outside of the ICU setting, we might be using that space. It's a model that a lot of places, including Marion County and Lynn County, are doing right now. They're all around the state pretty much trying to handle this hospital surge that is projected to happen here in mid-April. So we are aggressively planning that with the Health Department and our CHC, and good damn on what that might look like, including how many people we could accommodate, how we would staff it, how we'd have PPE and all the logistics. However, I know the fairgrounds have been requested in numerous email strings and resource requests as a way to possibly shelter some of the more vulnerable populations, or offer some sort of day drop-in services. And I just, I, one of the things I want to tackle today is what is the BOC's perspective and county manager's perspective on what that fairground should be used for? Because if we're not going to use it as a field hospital or an alternate care site, then I want to scrap all those resources because we probably have wellish people working on that right now aggressively, and we can suspend that effort and direct it somewhere else if that's not going to be used as an alternate care site. And for numbers projecting, it varies, but we could see up to 800, the need to hospitalize 800 patients here locally in Benton County over the next two months. And that's based on Peter Van Wiss calculations and modeling from all the other communities and numbers from around the world. And our hospital search capacity, I believe, is up to 200, and that means they're using every remote clinic site that they have and putting people in every bed that they have. So we potentially could see the need to have more bed space. Even if we don't plan for the 800, we still should be planning for as many as we can. And so that's kind of where we're going with that. So I guess what I need from the Commissioners and Joe is to hear, what would you guys like us to prioritize that fairgrounds for? Because once we really dive in too deep, we're almost trapped up in it.
Brian, could you talk a little bit, this is Pat, a little bit about, I know the fairgrounds has several buildings for the hospital overflow, would you, are you planning on, which buildings are you planning on utilizing as the hospital?
The main building would have been the auditorium. We could sort of use the arena if we basically rented a very, very, very expensive heated, very specialized tent. That rental for, I believe, two months would be about $20,000. But we could do that, set it up in the arena. It would be heated, raised floors, it would have lighting and have everything they would need to set up a hospital space, except for all the costs and everything. But if we, if it was big enough, we'd use both spaces. The indoor arena space, I'm sorry, the outdoor arena space covered with a tent beside it and the auditorium if we were going to go this route.
Okay.
Commissioner Ogier here. I think that planning and making sure we have those plans for field hospitals of projected surge is really critical, and we should proceed with the fairgrounds as a site. From the discussions I've heard with social service providers, the, there are other arrangements that are being made so far for alternate care sites for the vulnerable population. We still need more than being done right now, but I think that that is an important resource to have in place in order to not overwhelm the healthcare system.
Annabelle, do you have a thought?
I'm unmuted. Yeah, I kind of agree. I think that we have to try to use everything we have. I recognize that it's going to create some real challenges if this goes too long in terms of what, what the fairgrounds is going to be able to do after, after the fact, but this to me is a priority issue. So I guess we'll, we'll have to, have to work with the Fair Board and Lynn if that's the way we go.
Okay.
Right.
So Brian, it sounds like you're on the right track in proceeding with preparations as, for the fairgrounds as an alternative hospital site.
And I, and I, and Brian, I think in the past, we've talked about, we've all talked extensively about how, where the fairgrounds would fit in, so this does kind of fit into that conversation.
Okay, perfect. And we even were thinking if we had to, we're going to develop enough contingency planning around it to put up a giant tent out in that gravel lot. I believe it's pretty open still. I mean, we're trying to plan for as many contingencies as possible with dollar amounts assigned. The hardest part is once we're hitting that page where if we need all those things, they might not be available. But that's just a limiting factor across the board for everybody.
That's, that's what I was going, this is Pat. Brian, that's what I was going to say, does it make sense to reserve at least one large tent at this point? I can see that tent's going the way of toilet paper and that when you figure out you need some, that the shelves are bare.
I will explore that option with the logistics folks a little bit more and just get some, what are the costs to just reserve one? I don't have the visibility on that here at this moment, but I'll follow up early next week at the latest to try to find out those numbers, and that might be the prudent thing to do if it's a very small amount, to just reserve it.
Okay. I think that at least start the conversation with the vendors to, so they know we're, we are interested and, and as of today, what's their availability. Okay?
Okay, so my, my next one then is parks use. The use of our natural areas or park spaces. So again, with some of our resource requests, we've gotten through our liaison, which is Julie, talking from the community service providers. There's a, there's a big ask for us to allow camping at public, at our parks. And I, for one, within the city itself, we have no ability and no control and no jurisdiction to order or even really authorize any sort of camping at their campground or, at their city parks. And that's something I think if we were going to do, I don't know if there'd have to be an ordinance passed or if there's liability associated with it. That's more of a Vance question, but it is something that should be considered.
So Brian, one of the things, so one of the things that I did when Joe gave me a heads-up on this topic earlier is to make sure that the Governor's Executive Order 20-12 does not preempt our ability to consider the county's parks for housing, tent camping, that sort of thing. And I think at this point, from what you're describing, the Governor's Order does not prevent a jurisdiction from utilizing its parks for camping. And I say that because it's a, it's a hair-splitting analysis. The Governor's Executive Order, it closes public and private campgrounds, and it authorizes state parks, the State Parks Department, to close its facilities. Hypert technically, our parks are not campgrounds, they're parks. So I think we are outside the Governor's Executive Order closing public access to those facilities. So the conversation, I think, can go forward knowing that legally, we would be on solid ground if that's a direction the Board wants to take. And back, just backing up a half a step to your comment about liability, of course, there's going to be liability, but most, everything we do for the next several months is going to carry some measure of liability. And I would offer to the other Commissioners that we may be in a position where we should plan to assume a higher risk of liability just because things have to get done.
I, I know that part of the issue here is that with the closure of all the state parks, there are people in the state that were living going from state park campground to state park campground in their vehicles and campers, and they've suddenly found themselves homeless. And so there's a surge of folks that are vehicle camping in small campers that all of a sudden don't have a place to be. And I think that there are others working on this issue as well, trying to find a KOA or a department campground that can accommodate people and keep them social distance, but it's, it's a challenging issue. Do we have any parks that are, that would be adequate? And, you know, one of the issues, of course, is the sewage pump out, and I don't, I'm not aware of any of our parks that really have much capacity for, for any kind of length of stay.
Right, and one of the other apps, that would be more geared towards Lori, but one of the big asks with the authorizing camping at parks, specifically, they were within the city, but even Crystal Lake was suggested, was also a provision to bring in hand washing stations, porta potties, and possibly food services. I have a whole, there's a whole list of those. And so again, it goes back to what, what level do we want it to do that for? And then there's that slippery slope, which kind of Vance mentioned, where once we start doing that, for one, we really are, we, we kind of are getting to that point where should we do it for everybody, or, which we don't have the capacity to. So I just want to throw it out there as an idea.
There, one of, I've been sitting in all those calls with the social service providers, and I, I think that part of what we need to do is get a handle on how many people were really talking about serving and trying to figure out the most central location possible to provide the sanitation facilities that are needed. And right now, where people are camping is a bit scattered, and so we need sanitation at a handful of sites. And there's only one central hot meal heating location that I'm aware of at the moment, and there's probably a need for a second one or for delivery. That's the other thing that's been discussed, because that would be another way to do it. I, I can't see us not taking responsibility for basic sanitation in this kind of an epidemic. I think that it's, I know it's one of the things that is reimbursable, and again, there are going to be different funding streams coming forth. There's funding from the state coming through the Community Services Consortium that will cover some of the social services being provided, but the basic sanitation is something that's a gap. And I think we need to step up.
Well, and one thing we got a challenge of, and Vance can probably chime in more, is that if we're doing that within the city, we kind of, as far as I understand, state law and home rule and everything, we actually need the city's basically approval to do it, which they, I don't know, I'm going to, I'm going to go out on a limb and say, I'm not sure what their level of support is. I've gotten nicked messages, so I'm not sure if they're supportive of doing that.
And Brian, Brian is it, Brian is spot on. Just because we have declared emergency does not give us authority over city property. So if the city is not willing to open up its parks for any kind of camping, we don't have authority to override that decision. One other point I want to make, Zan, is that the Governor's Executive Order does talk about requiring certain things to be done if our parks are to be utilized for recreational purposes or by extension, any kind of camping. And that does include some level of sanitation requirements and certainly some posting requirements. So there is some consideration for sanitation built into the executive order that allows recreational facilities to continue in operation. Last point before I cede my time back to Brian. We do have, hypert technically, and I know that Lori may cringe at this, we do have a park in the city of Corvallis, and it's called the Courthouse Lawn. So just know that if there is a, is a, is a desire to open our parks up, you may want to consider whether you want that, any kind of camping to occur on the Courthouse Lawn. We can always, you can always pick and choose amongst our parks which ones to allow a particular
Yeah. I, my preference would definitely be to work with the city. I know that community development has been very flexible in working with the churches so far in helping them through this, but none of the social service agencies can afford a porta potty that's being cleaned twice a week with a hand washing station for the next, you know, two months, three months, and that's what they're looking at. And that's, and so the parks, the AMX Park is already being used, you know? No one's asked permission. It's being used. So I think we're going to have to face this, and we're better off having people camping in proximity to places like the Men's Cold Weather Shelter, where they're providing sanitation and laundry and everything else than scattered all over the place. And, you know, where there's medical check-ins. That's my piece.
Okay. Lori, do you have any thoughts on the parks issue?
Yes, just a couple comments. One, yes, Vance, I did cringe when you said the courthouse. But two, all the county, no, all the county parks excluding the courthouse grounds are outside, logistically away from services that these individuals are going to need. There one topic just came to mind, and I know this is kind of way out left field, but in Mary's in this conversation, are there any properties, foreclosed properties that the county currently has that, logistically, within the city limits? If you know that, I don't know if you know that answer.
This is like, I mute myself. No, not within the city limits. I'm trying to think of in the near vicinity of the city.
Mary, Joe Kirby, I thought we had one that we touched base with the city on that was around Timber Hill. Was that not in the city?
It's in the city, but it's on a hill, so they really couldn't camp on it. They get quite of an incline.
Back, back to you, Brian.
So one thing with that too, and this came in as a similar line of request, was a kind of plea to open up gymnasiums or any other foreclosed properties or buildings that the county had for day drop-in services, charging stations, medical checks, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And, yeah, that's again, another policy level one tied into this. I just got a text back from Dave Dudley, and the city is not authorizing any sort of camping of any kind at their city parks right now. And even some of the micro, there was a micro shelter that was, they were trying to have set up at one of the churches, I believe, that they put a stop on those electrical permits because of the nature of the use and the zoning and everything else. So I don't know where that was. Last email chain I saw, though, they were putting the brakes on that one.
Ozan?
It's a, it's a, I know that Corvallis was actually supportive of that, and so must have been kind of watched in other parts of the city. And I expect that in the emergency legislative session, that the whole, the bill by Representative Kotek that would create emergency override of zones is going to pass. And so at some point, this is going to become moot, and the city will need to provide space for these micro shelters and for tent camping.
All right. Back to you, Brian.
So I guess for now, maybe that's something I'll have to follow up with Lori on, or possibly Mary, or someone who knows more about the different foreclosed properties. If that's something you guys want, obviously, there has, there has to be more dialogue with the city, which should probably be more between Joe and Mark, but we can help mobilize some of that aspect, but I don't know what that looks like because I don't know where the properties are. But I think the same, we've run into the same issues. We would need to have, obviously, power to that area. We'd have to provide some sort of services, and that kind of comes with some level of dollar amount in liability. And ultimately, we would need some sort of conclusion and go-ahead from you guys if you want us to focus some of our efforts on that. We definitely can, but we would need to know what exactly those efforts are that you want to focus on. So if we had a property identified, and you said we want to use that as a day drop-in, we can coordinate through your arena with the community service providers to get that set up, and then set up, um, and then try to find porta potties and hand washing stations. They're kind of a hard commodity to nail down right now as well, and, and set that space up. Um, and then thinking about the camping and everything else at the parks and the use of our different areas, um, I'm sure Vance has some more insight on this as well, but I don't know if there's, uh, tenant law related there, rental kind of law, where if they're there for more than thirty days, they have some rights to the space. Um, I'm not sure about any of that, but it is something to consider that would need to be factored into whatever we decide. And, and I'm definitely not advocating we don't do anything, I'm just advocating that we really be thoughtful about this, because once we start these wheels going, um, there's gonna be other unpopular opinions, you know, everyone, no one, you can't make everyone happy.
So, so Brian, Joe Kirby here, I'd like to just interject and try and, and ask us to kind of back up and have a broader view for a minute. Uh, you just talked about a lot of issues that really should be handled within the Emergency Operations Center. Uh, there's a lot of logistical decisions. Uh, really, what we need to do is specifically put in front of the board, the policy decision that you're looking for. So I, I wanna be able to give you what you need. So if you could maybe state your policy, uh, issue in the form of a direct question to the board, so we can get a yes or a no, and not specifically get into all of the details and the nuances, those are for the Emergency Operations Center to handle in conjunction with the support that you have
Yep.
From city, county administration and council. So, yeah, if, if you can please, uh,
Yes.
Forward a question or question, so we can get specific yes or no's from the board.
Okay, so my specific question is, uh, is the board okay, or does the board want to use our natural parks and areas for camping or day use drop-in, as well as any other county properties?
Well, those are two questions, those are two questions. So I would, I would say, let's ask the first question, what about county parks? And then, once that question is answered, then let's move to other county facilities.
Uh, that, that was Dan Bell, I'm concerned about a broad-based question like that. Uh, I think we have to be a little bit more strategic. I'm concerned that, uh, uh, we, we have one, one big park, but it's not, not a, I don't think it's a strategic location for, for this kind of mass use, and that's, uh, fit and green. So however we phrase that, we, we need to be careful with that. First of all, I mean, it's on slopes, I'm not sure how much, uh, how many, you know, those you can put up there. But secondly, uh, we don't have a war on our hands with the, with the road district in that area. So I don't wanna ma- maximize that conflict just, just because we can have a blanket approach on parks. I think we have to look at where we, where, which parks, for example, like Fit and Greens, that's not gonna be a doable thing.
Uh, Commissioner Joe Kirby, what we would do is, what we need is a broad policy statement from the board, then the incident command would take that, they would evaluate each one of the properties. Uh, and, and so, I understand your concern about which ones work, which ones don't, uh, but there's still a lot of work that has to go into evaluating that. But for purposes of today, we need to understand if we even need to spend time evaluating our county parks. So I, I think the first question that Brian put forward to you still needs to be answered by the board, and then we would get into more details as we began evaluating all of our assets, but we just need to know if the board, uh, is supportive of us evaluating, uh, and utilizing our assets if need be.
I have no problem with that, though, that's, that's the main.
Okay, Zan?
I, I also am in support of us evaluating and assessing what, um, assets we have that we could use to support, um, vulnerable populations.
Uh, I would agree with that, and this is Pat, I would agree with that, Brian. Uh, I think that our first topic of, of getting the fairgrounds, uh, prepared as a al- alternative care site, probably should have, uh, be the first priority, and, uh, assuming you have the, uh, capacity to, uh, do evaluations of, uh, county sites, and I'm sure, uh, they'll be continuing, uh, conversations with the city that, that has probably more, uh, desirable locations, uh, but, uh, at, at least, uh, do some preparation for what the county has to offer as far as, uh, sites.
And, um, that's perfect, so I took that down in my notes. I do have the capacity, we will, next week, I can put that as one of the tasks. Um, it'll be up on the list, there's a lot of ones that are a little bit more urgent, but that one will definitely make it on there as something to be focused on. And a- as we go through this, we're obviously gonna expand our organization, so we can start to address some of those, and get some answers and dollar amounts, and kind of just liability assessments out there. Uh, one thing I do wanna highlight also is, um, really, a little bit, uh, in some capacity to the M O U, if even just working with the city, if they do allow, um, say camping or something at their park, or they agree to work with us and authorize these are days at one of their facilities, um, I believe we are still taking on the cost of that. So, uh, we'll have to do a little more research on that, and we'll definitely keep you informed as that progresses.
Uh, 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 Zan?
Um, I, 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 uh, understand that that's, um, arrangement under the M O U, and at this point, I am, um, okay with that. From everything I've been reading about the federal dollars and the state dollars that are coming through, there will be reimbursements available for a lot of these expenses. And, um, I remain concerned about the fact that when I do go through downtown, a large proportion of the people I see are people that are homeless, and they're just, um, walking vectors of disease at this point, because they don't have a place to go.
All right, thank you. Uh, another, this is Pat, another comment. Uh, Brian, uh, I think you mentioned, uh, porta potties and supplies like that may be in short supply. Again, uh, talk to the vendors and, and maybe the, the closest outfits are, uh, tight on supplies, but there may be, uh, alternatives, and, and that, that seems like one to, uh, that we're likely to need and to have, uh, figure out where those resources are.
Uh, Commissioners, uh, this is Joe Kirby, I was going to just summarize what I think I heard, and then I would like you to say yes or no to what I am summarizing. So what I heard is that the board is supportive of using the fairgrounds for either an alternative care site and/or for sheltering needs related to the homeless. Uh, that's what I heard, number one. So can you speak to that and say, yes, Joe, I support that statement, or no, I don't?
Support.
Uh, ye- yes, uh, I support, I support that statement.
Okay, thank you. So Brian, that helps you with the fairgrounds. The second question is, uh, similar, in that, does the board support, uh, the use of other county assets, including county parks and/or foreclosed properties, uh, for the purposes of, uh, sheltering the homeless and/or, uh, using, uh, to provide other services to vulnerable populations?
Support. I support it.
Support.
Okay, Brian, we have your two questions answered.
Yeah, my, my last one was, so that covers it. And then I believe Joe was gonna present a little bit more on another concern, and I can dive in here into that.
Uh, Brian, I, I think it's just important to recognize that, uh, we have a framework in place. Commissioner, what Brian is talking about is that, as you know, we've entered into a memorandum of agreement with the city of Corvallis regarding the Emergency Operations Center, how that is to, to work, and how the expenses are to be allocated and reimbursed, uh, from one organization to the other, and including state and federal dollars. So the reason that I bring it up is that particular document does provide, uh, financial, uh, authorizations to the Emergency Operations Center Director. Uh, those, uh, current, uh, spending, uh, agreements are that the, uh, Emergency Operations Center can spend up to three thousand per item, uh, on, uh, up to three thousand dollars per item, uh, or up to ten thousand dollars, uh, maximum, uh, on a daily basis. Uh, if the Emergency Operations Center Director was to exceed the ten thousand dollar threshold per day, uh, then they would have, uh, to go to either the city or county, and that agreement does specify who those folks are. On the county side, the Emergency Operation Center Director can go to the sheriff or undersheriff or their designee, uh, for further financial authorization over and above the ten thousand dollars per day. So that's the current framework we have in place. Uh, my direction to, uh, Brian has been, uh, to work within that framework. It's only been in place for a day, maybe two days. Uh, we need to see if that's going to work, and if those constraints are too significant. Uh, if, uh, the Emergency Operations Center Director, uh, felt that a significant dollar amount needed to be spent, uh, over and above the ten thousand dollars, uh, the sheriff or undersheriff or their designee would be able to authorize that. Uh, knowing and understanding the relationship that I have with the sheriff and undersheriff, I know that if they were uncomfortable authorizing that amount, that they would, uh, come to me and we would have a conversation. And if it significantly exceeded of the thresholds agreed in the M O A, uh, then I would be briefing the board on that. But we need to give this a try, uh, in terms of what we have in place. I know Emergency Operations Center Director, uh, and/or Directors are concerned that some of these expenses, uh, can add up quickly, or some of them are significant asks. Uh, but I would push back and say, we've got a process in place, let's, uh, see if it works, and if it doesn't, we'll come back and revisit that.
And my last comment there is, um, also a reminder for folks that you're interacting with, mainly Commissioners, um, if people need, you know, resources, uh, we are fielding a lot of those requests, and we're starting to really assess them and categorize them as much as possible. And what I mean by that, for example, and kind of to Joe's point, is we're getting a lot of apps for basically groceries. And my question that I started out with, um, not a policy level question, but just more of a comment, is at, at some point, we kind of have to say no to people and say, did you go to the store? So we're starting to give a lot more people, um, those kind of responses, because those are the same responses we're getting from the state, and we're trying to be responsible with, uh, tax dollars. That will change, though, as we, uh, get more donations in from people, and we're able just to literally, uh, funnel that to the, the people who are in, um, but in terms of spending, um, county dollars on groceries for people essentially, um, that's kind of just something that we keep encountering in terms of resource requests, or someone asking, we need to provide funding for something, or funding for staff, or hired staff. Um, and I, I don't think it's that simple, so I just wanted to chime in on that.
Uh, Zan?
Can I, um, comment on that?
Uh, go ahead.
Um, I, um, I think that there, there's also just a huge, again, information piece here, um, to direct people to the, um, food sites that are existing, to Win Fit and Food Share, uh, they have really stood up a great operation so far, um, to direct folks, um, to the services that they can access food. Um, I, I think that where we need to, I, there are two things that I think we need to be aware of. Uh, one is that for some items, especially when it comes to some of the sanitation supplies that might be needed by some of the nonprofits to keep clean where they're operating, uh, if, if we can purchase them both, we will have much better purchasing power and maybe better access. That's one. Two, um, uh, one of my concerns is that, once this pandemic winds down, we are still gonna need some of these nonprofits, and they're still gonna need to be viable. So, um, there's a whole suite of different efforts that are working to try and make sure that that's the case, including the Community Foundation, United Way, Oregon Community Foundation, um, and some of the state agencies as well. But I, I think we need to be very strategic, thinking about what those core sanitation, public health type resources are that we should provide, and take that pressure off of all those volunteers out there trying to take care of people.
All right, um, uh, did you have any, anything else? Uh, Brian, I, I guess I had a, a comment for you. You, you mentioned the requests and, uh, the lack of money to handle everything, but it's also, uh, your, your group is, uh, busy and, uh, really need to have your priorities clear. What, what is, uh, the top project, project that you're working on? And, um, being able to refer, uh, people asking about groceries to the, um, proper, um, sites, I think is, uh, an important part of your job.
Right, exactly, and that, that's kind of our new focus and direction, is making sure we, uh, don't get, what I call tangled up in the weeds, uh, of the individual requests that are, that are very important, but are not actually in our purview, either within our power, or not really within our scope of what we should be doing, because we're trying to stay at that thirty thousand foot view and help manage those problems.
Right, and, and that, that's your job. Uh, Under Sheriff Riddler, did you, do you have any, uh, comments for us?
Comment? No, I don't. Uh, I've been listening, the only thing is Vance's suggestion about the courthouse, we'll talk later, Vance.
Should we, should we not include Lori?
I think Lori will be on my team. Now, uh, Brian, Brian has covered it pretty well on what we're dealing with, um, and, uh, he is working too hard, so he needs to go home, well, he's at home, but he needs to stop talking for a little bit, so he can take care of what he needs to do. But, uh, we're doing okay, and I think, uh, you guys got the idea what Brian's trying to accomplish, so.
All right, uh, thank you. Uh, it, it's obviously a, a work in, um, progress. Joe, do you have any last?
I actually have one more update, Commissioners. In your meeting on Tuesday, Kate Porche, uh, from the Economic Development Office, uh, briefed the board. Uh, one of those things that Kate brought to your attention was her interest in trying to create some type of loan or grant fund. Uh, I am meeting with Kate Porche and Mary Ottley tomorrow to discuss that further. So next Tuesday, we should have more of an update for you.
Great, uh, so, um, Brian, do you, do you have any last comments, or are you ready to, uh, sign off?
Um, I think that's it. I actually don't have any other comments at this time, and, uh, these will be very useful. And I'm gonna try to start doing weekly, uh, kind of a financial report and executive report, just keep it very high level, highlight a few of the good things, or anything that we maybe encountered that was a little bit more of a challenge, just to keep you guys generally updated. And then I'll also use these policy meetings to update you verbally about anything, or allow, you know, answer any questions you might have about it. But then we have some oversight and just insight of what we're working on. Um, and our big thing is this week, and will be next week, is this, uh, P P E allocation. That's the number one. We gotta, we're focusing on that, and the volunteer and donations management. So, you know, the things at once.
Brian, and in your, um, weekly financial report, would you also include a note about any requests for dollar amounts that exceed either the daily aggregate amount, or the individual spending amount? Just so that we
Yeah, absolutely.
Of, of when and from whom that type of request is coming?
Yeah, I will definitely include that. And I, I'm kind of assuming just for ease, um, you guys will want maybe like a overall cost, but then a quick little broad breakdown of general expenses and personnel, just so we can get a look at where most of our costs are.
Uh, Brian, I think Mary and I can work with you on that report, uh, so I don't think we need to
Okay.
Talk about that at the meeting today, but, uh, we do need a summary report, as Vance had indicated, at least on a weekly basis. Um, so, but I'd like you and
Absolutely.
To discuss more about that, because it depends on what system we're using, uh, to track those costs. So, uh, Mary, stay tuned.
Okay.
Well, uh, speaking of Mary, uh, do you have any, uh, final comments for us, Mary? Well, uh, speaking of Mary, uh, do you have any uh final comments for us, Mary?
No, no, I don't. Thank you.
Great.
Uh, I, I do wanna add that I, I sent to the three Commissioners, uh, the, there's an MOU that was signed yesterday by the sheriff in the city that authorizes certain locations to be used for the community drop-off for donations, um, that the community members and organizations may provide for the uh emergency response. So that's in place.
Okay, uh, the next meeting of, of this group to get briefed on uh the EOC policy and results, uh, next Tuesday uh at ten AM, have we set the time?
Um, I'm looking at the calendar.
They, they by phone?
Um, I'm looking at the calendar right now, and it hasn't been added to our calendar yet, because March is one of those months that has five Tuesdays.
Okay.
Um, so typically, our meetings on Tuesday do start at nine AM, so I would suggest nine AM, so we don't get confused.
Actually, I would like to interject there. Brian, is that nine AM going to work for you? When you and I talked, you were, thought ten o'clock worked better for you because of your incident committee.
I will, I will make
Can you make?
I will make any time work, uh, yes, I can.
'Cause I, I mean, I agree with Lilia. If we stuck with our regular schedule, that works best, but it, what's more important is that you can accommodate being there. It's not disrupting your work at the Emergency Operations Center.
Uh, no, it'll be totally fine. I'll make sure Sarah's got the briefing covered, and I will be there at nine.
Okay, so I will be in touch with Teresa about noticing that. Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, uh, you're done?
I'm done.
So we're not gonna get a?
I don't wanna make Lori or Greg anymore angry at me.
Do, do we wanna transition
Thank you.
into a legal update? That was on the calendar for yesterday.
Uh, no, we canceled yesterday. Um.
Okay, okay.
Really, there's not a whole lot going on that's, there's nothing going on on the litigation update that is more important than what you're doing right now.
Okay, um.
Okay.
I, I think if uh there's no other questions or comments, uh, this meeting is adjourned, and uh, thank you all for your efforts and
Thank you. Thank you. I hope that.